All right, first of all, I'd like to welcome Karen King to the Board of Education. Thanks for your service. I don't know what else to say.
Thank you, I'm happy to serve.
Good answer.
All right, item one, let's call the meeting to order and record members present in absent.
Ellis.
Here.
A.
Here.
McDermott.
Present.
Parker.
Present.
Slater.
Here.
Item two, read the open meeting compliance statement.
I, the undersigned clerk of the Board of Education of the Alba Independent School District, number one of Woods County, Oklahoma, certify that prior to December fifteenth of the last calendar year, the date, time, place of this regular meeting was filed in the office of the county clerk of Woods County, Oklahoma. I certify that it is twenty-four hours prior to this meeting, during Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays, notice of the date, time, place, and agenda of this meeting was postponed by public view at the location of the meeting, witnessed December fifth, two thousand and sixteen.
Item three, consent agenda, all of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved by one board vote unless any board member desires to have a separate vote on any or all of these items. The consent agenda consists of a discussion, consideration, and approval of the following items, three A, addition of items of new business to the agenda.
And nine.
Three B, minutes of November seventh, two thousand and sixteen, regular board meeting, and a November sixteenth and November twenty-ninth, two thousand and sixteen, special board meetings.
I'm not able to read my minutes.
I don't know if it's too short, I'm sorry.
That'll be fine.
You sure?
Yeah.
Okay. Better than that one.
Well, I am.
Just releasing.
Let me see where I think I am. Meeting minutes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If I can.
Now I get them too. I just did that. I promised while I was at it would not.
I understand that, that's what happens with me.
This type file is not supported, I get down one out of.
That's what I do.
The first one you can read, the second one I cannot read, um, the third one we cannot read, so I guess a trick, does the first one we can read?
The first one.
Right.
Did you guys get them when you were at home? Did you get a copy at home? So what, you can read the seventh, but not the sixteenth or the twenty-ninth?
That's correct.
There's our copies almost there.
Have you viewed them or they're?
Yes, I have. I didn't find any errors in anything. Wasn't a whole lot, a couple of them just. One executive session discussed, came out, there's no vote taken.
A bunch of yays and nays to me, okay.
Three C, approval of treasurer's report on the status of funds and investments. I'm gonna go ahead and go through three F, three D, approval of activity fund report, three E, approval of activity account fundraisers, and three F, approval of a child nutrition report.
Okay, if you want to go back to the open investment ledger, asking David Manning each and every month, pretty much what we have in money and. Treasurer's report. Our gross production was up again this month, two hundred and fifteen thousand, so we've got up above that, so it's about twenty-five thousand more than what last month. And part of my communication is just gonna tell you that because of the OPEC conversations, looks like it's gonna help the state of Oklahoma with drilling and that type of thing, so we can still see the improvement in that. And then you've got your colored general fund revenue, and kinda give you an explanation and everything. And then I'm gonna give you another, just a quick. This might be easier for some to read, may not, I don't know. And then our building fund. All right, yeah, let's play. But you could look at that, the appropriation map, two million, three sixty-five, seven sixty-five, encumbered today is three hundred and thirty thousand, nine sixty-four, warrants that we've written are two hundred and thirty, forty-four, forty-one, but we still have about a hundred thousand dollars out there that we haven't paid off, and that could be an open type of purchase order or that thing that might be, that might be completed, you'll see in our normal monthly bills, we have one for twenty thousand dollars for Roy easily, that's an estimate, so that may not be true, we may not see that. So for the remainder of the year, if all the bills are paid and everything, we have two million, thirty-four, eight hundred and sixty cents to spend out of the building fund. That make sense? Okay? And then the general fund. Our appropriation sixteen, nine thirty-seven, three forty-two oh two, we've encumbered up to nine million, one oh three, four twenty-nine, sixty-four, we paid out three million, four sixty-one, oh nine fourteen, so all of those encumbered balances may be farm plan, utilities, those types of things that we plan on paying out, and then so, at this point in time, if we spend all of that encumbered balance, we'd still have seven point eight thirty-three, nine twelve to work with, so we're right at fifty-three, fifty-four percent of the budget at this point in time. Also, on any purchase orders, whether it's an activity, a building, or even a general, if they come down here, if we don't have the money, we don't sign it, so there's gotta be money, and then the drills take a lot of time, and we have a general, is putting them into right category, right fund, and those types of things. We haven't received any of our federal monies yet, and we've gotta spend that, so that will be coming in. Of course, our mill levy and all that will be high until January February, so those are all lacking on those other sheets. So, at this point in time, we're right at where we were a year ago, basically, within one percent, two percent of our spending and of our bills and so forth, so we're in really good shape at this point in time. I don't know if that's easy for y'all to read, and if you'd like to see that each and every month, that's. But again, on all of our purchase orders and everything, we're not gonna write a purchase order unless we have money in there, and then if we do write a purchase order, it may be for more than what we actually spent, so later on, we'll find out really how much we have left over to the purchase rate. Any questions?
What are we projecting to carry over, do you have any idea?
It's hard to project because, you know, the first seven months, we spent about a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars per month, but this month, we only spent thirty-five, so we could be as high as six million for carryover, looking at what we have at this point in time, unless things go up and that type of thing, but so, right now, that's kinda where we're at, to be real honest here. Any questions? And the activity fund. One thing I will mention is in the basketball, you know, we've got a balance of twenty dollars and fifty-nine cents. We've had three home ball games, so all of that has been taken out for gates, for referees, and so forth, and those receipts haven't been put back into this account yet, but we do have the money, we have received it through the bank, so that will come back up. So that's why that looks low at this time, because we've had three home ball games in a row. You know, we're paying officials, I don't care what, over a hundred dollars, plus our workers at the gate, and also at the table, and then we get three hundred and fifty dollars, I think, with change, just for concession, so all of that money will go back into as soon as, as soon as we get it received and so forth from the bank, so that's why that's low at this point in time. Everything else looks good? Okay. Activity fundraisers, unless y'all have questions? And pretty normal. Key Club's gonna buy the little fingers, say number one, and sell them throughout the year. Celebration of books called Taste Books at middle school. They're gonna try to break even, I guess. FFA Key Club, together, schoolwide, raise funds, don't make stamp out starvation. Estimated profits, three hundred dollars, the estimated expenditure should be three hundred dollars, so they're gonna break even, so they're just gonna give that money back, okay? And then seventh grade class, they're gonna have a spring flea dance, so that'd be a field trip later on. Any questions on the fundraiser? And child nutrition count. You can see that. Expenditure, fifty thousand, four ninety-eight, breakfast, ten thousand, our income, forty-five thousand, forty-one hundred dollars from Big Five, federal reimbursement, seventy-eight, so at this point in time, we're in good shape there also. We'll serve a few more meals this year than what we have in fact. Any questions?
Do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
I'm going to agree with the consent agenda, those items referenced in three D, three C, three D, two E, and three F.
Second.
Ellis.
Aye.
A.
Aye.
McDermott.
Aye.
Parker.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Item four, vote to approve or not to approve the purchase order encompassed for the following funds, script by seventeen, for a general fund number eleven, with purchase orders, PO numbers five twelve through five fifty-one totaling thirty-five thousand, five hundred and twenty-two dollars and twelve cents. Payroll PO number five zero two one seven through five zero two one eight totaling three hundred and eighteen dollars and sixteen cents, with change orders number fifty thousand through fifty thousand two eighteen, for a year-to-date total of nine million, one hundred and three thousand, four hundred and twenty-nine dollars and sixty-four cents. Four B, bill of fund number twenty-one, the PO number thirty-two through thirty-five, totaling fifty-five hundred dollars, with change orders one through thirty-five, for a year-to-date total of three hundred and thirty thousand, nine hundred and sixty-four dollars and forty-eight cents. Four C, the child nutrition fund number twenty-two, change orders one through twenty-eight, and payroll change orders fifty thousand through fifty thousand four, for a year-to-date total of three hundred and forty-two thousand, five hundred and eighty-four dollars and fifty-eight cents. And four D, gift fund number eighty-one, change orders one through nine, for a year-to-date total of eight hundred and thirteen thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars.
We go back to the general fund encumbrances, really not anything strange this month, on five twenty-three, we hit a deer coming back from the speech, cost is fifty-three oh two nineteen to get fixed, we had a thousand dollars deductible, so we do have a check from our insurance for forty-three oh two nineteen. As you can see, farm plan, five forty-eight, that's an open PO of ten thousand dollars, and that's what I was talking about, it's encumbered, but we may not spend all that back in that other register, and then final spraying of all of the yards and all of the stickers and everything else is four thousand dollars. So pretty much routine, so we spent thirty-five thousand, five twenty-two this month, and previous months, our average was a hundred and twenty-eight thousand per month because July and August are big months because of new purchases and so forth. And then on the building fund. Whoop, what is that?
Are you leaning on Litzemberg?
Right. Just normal repairs of Northwest Electric, an open PO of five thousand, Litzemberg Construction Company. Last month, we were talking about all of the parking and everything at the new indoor facility, and trying to take care of that, we were talking over three hundred thousand dollars for all of the concrete and so forth, and so we talked to Litzemberg, and also Randy McMurphy, County Commissioner too, we could rock that whole area and so forth for about nineteen thousand dollars compared to three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And before we did this, I talked to Roy easily, he said, the rock that we were getting, and whatever you call that sub stuff underneath there, if someone doesn't leak through, it caused, if we get all that, that would be perfect, be the same type of thing, so we went ahead and got the contract with him. Okay, I don't wanna go there.
Serious, serious, shipping them out.
I don't wanna do that, 'cause I live on Silas.
Where's that ton of voice you want?
I know. And then on easily associates, that's an estimated cost of that seven percent of what we think will be the cost of it, so that's an open PO, that hasn't all been spent at all. And before we spend any of that, those bills will be presented to the board before we can pay them. And for plumbing and heating and air, that's just an open PO for the different projects and things that we anticipate. And then child nutrition. Don't have a report this month, still working on some things. Gifted fund, we had no transactions there, so those are the finances and what's going on this month.
Make a motion that we approve for A, B, and C, and D, I mean, there are no Cs and Ds, but.
Item number four.
My second.
Slater.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
McDermott.
Aye.
A.
Yes.
Ellis.
Aye.
Clerk's reports.
I've asked Alyssa Murrow, my physical education teacher, to, well, I asked her to come, but she wasn't able to come, she has been working on a tower garden in our building that she received through the Schools for Healthy Lifestyle Grant that she applied for originally, even two years ago, but it's an ongoing grant, we're in our second year of receiving the grant, and she has put, gotten a tower garden, and it's in our circle drive, it's really pretty neat, and with this tower garden, she is incorporating the students in everything, all the students planted the seeds in what she called rock wool, and I'll pass around these pictures, and so you guys can kinda get a closer look at kind of what they're doing, and they plant it in little, just like the little moss down there, you see, and when it gets two to four inches, she, they transfer it into our vertical garden, and from there, they've been watching them grow, and the, the tower garden has a watering system, yeah, it's quite impressive, you should come by sometime and look at it.
And it's in your?
It's in our circle drive.
I've seen the light.
Yes, and it's, it's like their.
I've been using that pot machine or something, I wouldn't know.
No, no, it's healthy.
Hey, come on, we're eating.
Juice, juice, we're growing veggies.
Juice.
Healthy, it's very cool.
Healthy, healthy lifestyle, and it's on a watering system, and you might see the lights glow, the growing lights, she does have, it's a lot of work too, she puts into this, she has to put nutrients in this big base tub every two weeks, and she has to test his filter water, we found that out by the hardware, special water, and once they start to flower, she has to pollinate at her single flower, I mean, it's, it's turned out to be a lot of work, but it's really neat, the kids really love it, so she pollinates, she has a little brush, paintbrush, that she pollinates every flower.
Little bumblebee.
And to help, to make the veggies grow, and, but the kids are really excited, and now she's having the kids do some journaling with what they're seeing, and this student did the jalapeno, and they draw, they draw the picture of how it started and, you know, how it's now become a jalapeno, they measured it at, during this process, they describe it, and they do a little writing, and they've been doing that with the various, they've been doing bib lettuce, and I brought, I harvested a little bit for a game, sage, we have sage, there's a jalapeno I cooked just a little bit ago, it's gonna stay very well in the envelope, and cilantro, the bib lettuce, and she also encourages the students to try it, and most of them will, you know, and most of them have never tried some of these things before, so it's just a neat way to get the kids to take an interest in something healthy that, you know, I know my kids are that type, they're not gonna really go for the vegetables, but to see it from start to finish, have a hand in it, they're a lot more interested to try something, and she's just done a really neat job of incorporating these different things into our school and the nutrition, and so I wanted to be able to share that with you guys, and unfortunately, she couldn't be here to share it herself, but Alyssa Murrow. Uh huh, but she's done a really neat job with incorporating some new, out-of-the-box things into our, into our program.
Okay, I brought Ms. Mary and Mrs. Cushingberry to talk about a grant that they've received on Reflex Math.
I, okay. We teach second grade at Longfellow, and when we get second graders in, they have so much to learn, they start in first grade learning, and kindergarten, learning reading, and math, and everything, and they come to us, and addition and subtraction is so difficult for them, so I started looking for a program that would help them, and I came across Reflex Math, and they offered grants, and I thought, well, no big deal, I just have to fill out a few things, and so I filled it out and turned it in, and they called me and said they were interested in using my classroom, but if there was another person in the building that would do it, I had a better chance of getting the grant. So, Mrs. Cushingberry's my next door neighbor, and I went next door and I said, hey, how would you like to do this with me? It's a really neat program, and so she filled out her part, and so.
After her arm was twisted?
Yes, and so we got a grant, and what I really like about it is it focuses on fluency, and that means the student's able to retrieve that math fact immediately. It's geared for second grade all the way up through eighth grade, although there are people that use it in high school and special ed classrooms, because you can do addition, subtraction, multiplication, and division, and of course, we just focus on addition, subtraction at our level. But there's been lots of studies that show the quicker that children can access those math facts, they're more likely to be successful in their later mathematical courses, and the National Math Advisory Board, and the NCTM, and other educational organizations highlight math fact fluency as a central pillar to every student's mathematical education, and so I think that's so important. When the kids start learning the math facts, it teaches addition and subtraction side by side in what we call fact families, and if you don't know what that is, that's like three plus five is eight, five plus three is eight, and then it turns it around for subtraction, thirteen, or eight minus five is three, eight minus three is five, and so it teaches them side by side, so they're seeing it as a whole picture rather than just individual math facts. I also like, I have a background in special education, and I'm always kind of looking for things that will help the underdog and those kids that are lower achievers, and I really like this program because it lets them go at their level. It, they do an assessment when they begin, and depending upon how quickly they answer the questions, then that's how quickly the questions come up, so if you've got some pretty fast and more advanced kids, they're getting questions like this, the slower ones are getting questions like that, and so I really like that it's more individualized than other things that I've seen.
So how it works is every day lesson is broken into three different parts, first, when they first log on, they do a quick assessment, where she talked about, that brings up their previous facts they have learned, see if they still got that fluency that they had before, and it also, like she mentioned, it's, they, one number pops up, like one, two, three, it measures how quickly they can type that into the keyboard, so they pick that up, so it tells how quick they will pop up. After the assessment is done, they go into a session called coaching, this is where it has two main purposes, the first part, it introduces new facts, and they learn the new fact family, and once they get practice, when they go into practice, so it's about twenty-five times, and then after they do that coaching, they learn the new fact family, that is taken into the daily game, developmental game, and this is the fun part, where the kids are excited to go, they think, every day, can we go to the game place now? Tuesday or Friday, and so they're super excited to go and do these facts because they're a game base, and it gives an incentive of tokens, the more tokens you get, you can buy at the store, and what we like about it is that they don't waste any time on it, because it has, a green light is what they call it, the green light serves two purposes as well, they have, until they meet that green light, they will not go and waste time at the store, that unlocks the store, so they have to get the green light to go to the store, and then once the green light is full, they go to the store, and that just tells the session is over, so they have all that, it's exciting, and they like it.
And the kids like it, and I do like the fact that they're locked out of spending tokens until they get that green light, and it usually takes them maybe twenty minutes for your slower one, fifteen for the ones that are a little faster, so it's a reasonable amount of time that they're spending on it. Mrs. Cushingberry and I have a report that was printed out, the first page is her class, the second page is mine, and it shows where the kids started and where they're at right now, and I am just amazed at the huge gain in fluency that they have done, it's just amazing. Also.
Do we have more than one circuit? Or is it just the only?
These are, we're, yes, there's five second grades.
These are the only two on it?
Yes. Yes.
They are also able to practice these at home too, we give them a login and a password, and they can do this at home as well.
But I know, Mrs. Cushingberry and I were talking about, we just finished teaching two-digit addition and subtraction with regrouping. But, um, I know Mrs. Cushingberry and I were talking about, we just finished teaching two-digit addition and subtraction with regrouping. It has been so much easier this year because the kids know their facts. Now, not all of them are a hundred percent, you can see, but they have made huge gains. And, um, I think at the bottom it tells you. Uh, Mrs. Cushingberry, we've done about forty days each of this program. And so in forty days' time, they've made a significant amount of improvement.
Teaching money is one of the harder classes in secondary. That has been much easier in the previous years.
Because they can add.
They can add, they can subtract.
It's very nice. And then one other thing that we do for our classes is we're able to print out milestones and certificates. So when they reach a certain milestone, we print it out. And there's individual ones, there's class ones, her class has solved ninety fact, ninety thousand facts already.
He wants a new certificate.
Yes. And then the kids can get individual certificates on how many facts they've solved, what percent they are fluent and things like that.
You may have said this, but how long have you been doing this?
About forty days.
So you started it.
September.
September.
We've, uh, three times. They provided a ninety minute.
You said two or three times a week?
Yeah. They provided a ninety minute, um, yeah, it was a training online webinar. Thank you, that's really good webinar. And, and so we both did that when we started the program after that. So.
Exciting.
Good.
Congratulations.
Thank you. We really enjoy it too.
Okay, Lincoln, um, I would like to invite everybody, Thursday night is our evening of art. First from five to six thirty and that is something we've done now about four years. Our students have, um.
Take it time again.
Five to six thirty Thursday. Students have made, um, three different types of art projects at Graceful Arts and they'll be displaying those. And they've also made ornaments, um, that can be purchased through donation for North West Family Services. It's always been a really neat event for our parents and our students and just to kind of spend some time together and do it. Outside of our regular, um, regular classroom activities, so serving is not everybody that. Um, we want to thank Mrs. Slater and Mrs. Drackliff again, our leadership, we had our election, um, as well. Um, our leaders have, have begun to take some responsibility and turn up with some different ideas in the school. So, um, they have begun to deliver our, some of our supplies from our school store that are owned and purchased. Um, they're beginning to take a little more responsibility or, or, I won't say I have it, but they're going to take a little more responsibility with the ice cream machine. Which is going to be hard to handle. And they're beginning to do some other things. So they are helping with our library and changing it for exile, which is something that is exciting for them to be able to put together. So Mrs. Slater and Mrs. Drackliff have done a great job. We are math, Steve, we're math testing this week. Um, and are looking forward to that, either using the new Chromebooks. And actually, they've started today with those. Um, the teachers, um, one of, one of the teachers in particular sent off her students a Google document. And had them type what they thought of using the Chromebook and then their remote activity. So we're excited about some of the things that we're going to be able to do with that and with our students. And they're excited about some of those opportunities. So also want to invite everybody next, uh, Wednesday, December fourteenth, we're going to have our coffee, um, and donuts and some food at the principal. I'm going to present with some teachers, I'm going to talk about our math test, I'm going to update where we're at with that. And where we intend to, intend to go. We're going to talk about exile again, this love race is going to, um, there are still some questions out there. So we want to review that again with people and explain that, that process. Um, we're going to get a little update on our reading program. The Wonders reading program is new this year. And we're going to talk a little bit about how that was, how we determined that, um, it was done through a rubric. And we're going to show how they scored that, why they scored it and some of the challenges that we faced. And what we're doing to overcome those challenges. So there'll be a few teachers that, that will be there to talk about that. And we're going to talk a little bit about the report card. And what our grade was on report cards and how all of these things that we're implementing is going to be tied into some of these.
What, what time is that?
That will be at seven forty-five, December fourteenth, it's Wednesday, you know, seven forty-five.
Oh.
And.
Mr. Sunderland and Blackwell did not have a report, so I believe Mrs. Simon's here to report for the high school from Mr. Potter.
It's not going to be a complete high school report, it'll be the things that I am in charge of. But Key Club right now, we are in full swing of adopting our residents. So my kids have, um, the residents that don't have any visitors, they gave us a list of names. I paired kids with them we thought would be a good match and they go down and see them and, um, spend time with them, take them things around the holidays, around their birthdays, special occasions. So they have, they're, um, in full swing of that. We just finished calling for toys for tots in the community, so hopefully all of you heard from, through my Key Club kids. And they had a great turnout, they were supposed to take four days, we finished in three and they had a lot of people, um, donate to that. Stamp Out Starvation that you mentioned just a little bit ago, um, Key Club and FFA joined together on that. They had set a goal for us, we exceeded that goal. We packaged thirty-four thousand meals that day, so that was amazing. And it took, and we were there from the minute they came until the end of the school day. Finally, cleaned up and everything by four, but thirty-four thousand meals, so that was wonderful. Um, we have our Key Club blood drive next Wednesday, the fourteenth as well. It'll start at eight o'clock instead of nine, um, they've given me an extra hour so I can bring in extra people. And just since I've been sitting here, she had let me know that we are going to be able to, um, give those donations in Kim Van Lanningham's name. So that'll be a great thing that we're able to help with as well through our drive and through the local drive both. Um, then on my teacher cadet kids, um, we have been working a whole lot on our formal job interview skills. We've been sitting in on formal job interviews, uh, with Mr. Potter, with myself. We're going to branch out to some people they're not as comfortable with soon. But their interviews with Mr. Potter were really formal and intense and that was exciting to watch them in that, in that setting. And he treated them just as though they were there for a real job interview, the way they presented themselves, their dress, their resumes. And we, we expected it to be the formal, uh, setting and it, it went really well, they got some great feedback on that. We have been practicing our formal parent teacher conferences, our parent teacher phone calls, things like that. They've had to hone those skills because our kids these days, um, are used to texting and, and, uh, Facebooking and messaging and we're not used to communication. And, um, from the beginning of this year till now, we've made great gains just through the interviews, the phone calls, the, it, formal sit downs that they have to have with me. Where they have to have actual conversations. And so that's going really well, they have grown so much in that and so many of those kids needed that exposure before they get out in the real world. Um, they have been, uh, observing at the schools now for about six weeks in whatever area they thought they had interest in. They have been teaching full lessons in our classroom, each one of them is responsible for teaching so many lessons throughout the year for the full class period as though they were teaching whatever grade. And whatever subject it is they're interested in teaching. So we've been working really hard on that and they've been doing really well. Um, I think that's about it for Key Club and for teacher kids. Are there any questions about either one of those things or anything else at the high school?
Have they been working on their speed and their presentation?
I was told to be speedy, he gave me a time limit and said, stay in it, so I'm in that time limit.
Well, you did a very good job.
As a matter of fact, texted me right off the bat and said, remember your time. I said, I will.
You still got a couple of minutes.
How many are in your teaching decks?
Eight girls and actually, uh, this semester, we have some people adding to them. So, uh, out of those eight, I have all, seven of the eight, that is what they want to do.
Good.
One girl wasn't sure, so I said, why not come, this is how you find out.
Be back.
And she, she's still unsure, but we are, supposedly, heard a lot of kinds of situations.
I want to back up to your Key Club residency, where is that?
That's at Beatles.
At Beatles.
Yes. We're doing a lot of.
Lots of pictures, good communication now, thank you.
Hundred seventeen members, I'd be able to give you one, I talked about that before, so we got a ton of people and.
I know you have tons, but yeah.
All the time if we can.
Fabulous, thank you.
Thank you.
We have two resignations. We have Tracy Millage. Lincoln is a parent and also Emily Shrum, parent at Middle School. So probably going to replace at least one for next semester at this point in time. Reassignments, we don't have any communications. We've got a review board policy that, uh, we gave you. This is a new policy that we just found out that we have to have last Friday and it has to do with, um. Child welfare and all that, so we're going to let you have a look at it for a month and then come back and, um. Vote on it one way or the other, but it's going to be a requirement, so. And I'll talk a little bit later about it when we look at the policies and so forth. The other communications, um. You know, with OPEC's decision to cut back on their oil and everything, it looks like if they're going to. Start drilling again in state of Oklahoma, that will be good for us. And we can already see that, you know, we had a hundred twenty-five, uh, two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars to go for that this month. Which is up about twenty-five, so future looks good for us to be real honest with you. And then I'm going to pass you out some dates that, uh, talking with, um. Roy Easley that we'll be looking at for the depleting of the wellness center and indoor facility. Uh, may have some, uh, special board meeting in there sometime, but, uh. Looks like completed documents, ninety-five percent final reviewed December fifteenth. Owners revision did documents reviewed and then issued the project, the contract with competitive bidding. See bids from the contract is January twenty-sixth. Uh, prepare the contract for board approval and signature, so we may have to have a board meeting somewhere around there. And then, um, on the sixth, scheduled board meeting. Begin construction in February, June, July, complete construction. I think he's a little, I think we can get it completed quicker than, but I'm not sure. Um, we are talking with him right now, uh, about getting some temporary heat into the building and so forth, because that hasn't been completed. ONG was contacted about the second week in November, we still haven't got them to come up and get it in the indoor facility. They promised me we'd have it by twelve, so.
ONG?
Yes. So those are some things that we're working on at that point in time. Also, um. Want to, want to remind that this is the first day the annual board to sign up for that and you have until Wednesday for that. Um, as of today, we did not have anybody sign up. We talked to them at four thirty, somewhere in there. So really, that's all the communications I've got right now, there's just a lot of things happening that free legislative trying to get. How are we going to find education, how are we going to give teacher pay raises and those types of things? But I don't think anybody has any idea what's going to happen to be real honest with you. No. Care is actually going to, uh, because it's just a two-year left in the term, she gets to do without a special election. So it's actually seat number two. And that will be, so there won't be the one election, there won't be two on the board or whatever. So because of the timeframe left and, uh, bills we could afford, they could turn that out. Good question. Yeah, they have to have three out there, so. But other than that, everything seems to be going well, so, um, do you have any questions for me? Okay.
Item seven, items of new business, seven A, discussion of possible board action, vote to approve and offer. Uh, an offer of employment to Jill Connor, non-certified personnel, a temporary one semester contract from January fourth to May eighteenth, two thousand sixteen.
Because of the student teaching with Bryce Lewis, Jill Connor was a teacher of record for the first semester. So her basic contract will be up at the end of the first semester, so we need to, uh, start Jill out as a non-certified. And I will make that recommendation to the board that we do that.
That'll actually be May eighteenth, two thousand seventeen.
Yes. Thank you.
I'm making motion we approve employment to Jill Connor. On a temporary one semester contract.
I'll second that.
Slater?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Hey, German?
Aye.
Kane?
Yes.
Ellen?
Aye.
Seven B, discussion of possible board action, vote to approve board policies BBB dash P, BBH, BJCD dash R, FFA, EA, FFA, EA dash U, and ACB.
These are policies that have been given to us by the Oklahoma School Board Association. They're either new or there are a little bit of corrections in them, deletions, whatever. But we do, um, contract with Oklahoma School Board each and every year to send these new policies and these corrections out from the legislature. And you've all had these for a month, so I would recommend that we approve the policies as presented.
Still move?
Second.
Ellen?
Aye.
Kane?
Aye.
Hey, German?
Aye.
Yes.
Later.
Seven C, discussion of possible board action, vote to approve a professional development, development staffing for all certified, non-certified employees. As of December fifth, two thousand sixteen, that earned at least fifteen professional development points by October thirty-third, two thousand sixteen.
And again, um, this is to offset maybe some pay raises and so forth that the state board did not give us. Um, we are at basically the same percentage of expenditure that we were a year ago. And we gave our employees a stipend at this time and I believe that we will have the money at the end of the year. So I would recommend to the board that we approve for all certified personnel, non-certified personnel that gave the fifteen points by October thirty-first. Professional development, we depleted and we have documentation that I would, uh, move that we give them a thirteen hundred and fifty dollar stipend at this point in time.
I will make that recommendation.
Second.
Ellen?
Aye.
Kane?
Aye.
Hey, German?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Seven D, discussion of possible board action, vote to approve the mental committee for the teacher residency program for FY seventeen, Lincoln Elementary, teacher Carol and Cole. Committee is Cam, Cam Argo, Madison Williams, Chris Starbuck, AHS teacher Jason Thomas. Committee Les Potter, Patty Duncan and Hale Sonner.
Again, this is a mandate from the State Department with no monies. It used to be, um, monies out there available for us. But, uh, I would recommend that this committees be approved as presented.
I still read.
Second. Slater?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Hey, German?
Aye.
Kane?
Aye.
Ellen?
Seven E, discussion of possible board action, vote to approve out of state travel to Hutchinson, Kansas, December ninth, two thousand sixteen. For the Iowa FM pay, four inch live talk judging team to attend the Kansas Beef Expo.
We have sixteen students involved and at work, anytime we go out of state with a, uh, program or activities, we must note on that. I would move or make the recommendation to the board that we approve this trip.
I'll make the motion that we approve a trip to Hutchinson, Kansas.
I'll second.
Slater?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Hey, German?
Aye.
Kane?
Aye.
Ellen?
Seven F, discussion of possible board action, vote to approve the Iowa School District Foster Care Plan and the former C Parkers as foster care liaison.
Again, last Friday, we got the email from the State Department stating that we have to have a policy before December tenth.
You got it last Friday?
Got it last Friday. Uh, the first policy that you see in the attachment was a sample of policy that a regional accreditation officer completed. I got the next one this morning on my email. And this comes from the State Department itself. So this policy pretty much states that. The Alvin Public Schools will coordinate with child welfare and other liaisons. Make sure that any foster child in our school district has free and appropriate education. And on the committee, I would be the head person and then Tim. And last. And last, as coordinators, and Sherry as special ed. And then I've asked Sarah Ward, District One, DHS coordinator to be on this and she is asked to give. And also. Meyer, Amber Meyer, Amber Meyer from Northwest Family Services. So we will meet after the policy and I told them to try to get together and discuss this. So I would recommend to the board that we adopt that second foster care policy, which actually comes from the state department of education.
I'd make that motion to accept foster care plan two hundred S, seven F.
Second.
Do we need to approve the committee?
No.
Ellen?
Aye.
Kane?
Aye.
Hey, German?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Player?
Yes.
Seven G, discussion of possible board action, vote to approve the Alba School District School Wellness Plan for FY seventeen.
This plan is in cooperation with Woods County Coalition. That's the same organization that asks for the education to be to be approved. With this, we would have the opportunity as a district for a five thousand dollar grant that we could utilize any type of safety or health related. CPR units, school safety equipment out on the, on a grade. And this is working with our HTO group, our health and safety committees and so forth. And this is, this would give us a different why, a year from now, each site could apply for these grants. But this grant would be for five thousand dollars. And I've been to most of the Woods County coalitions and Ericon, we really work hard here in Woods County to get safer and that type of thing, help the situation. So I would recommend to the board that we do adopt this wellness plan.
I shall move.
I'll second.
Ellen?
Aye.
Kane?
Aye.
Hey, German?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
Player?
Yes.
Seven H, discussion of possible board action, vote to appoint Byron Nettles as payroll clerk and insurance coordinator.
What's Meyer big down here, four weeks now probably, so we're just now figuring out where to put her. And she seems to be fitting in to the payroll clerk, the insurance and having to take a little bit of leeway off of, or work off of Pam to where she could do that. Substitute pay and also time clock plus and all of those types of things. So I would make that recommendation at this time.
So move. Second.
Player?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Hey, German?
Aye.
Kane?
Aye.
Ellen?
Aye.
Seven I, discussion of possible board action, vote to approve the assignment of Tim Margot as assistant superintendent for the remainder of FY seventeen.
In one of our special board meetings, we interviewed three of our principals and I'm going to tell you right now, in open session, you did an outstanding job in the interview process. Very proud of all of the principals for their answers and dedication to the Alba Public Schools. But at this time, I would recommend to the board, Tim Margot be the assistant superintendent for the remainder of FY seventeen.
I make the motion, we approve Tim Margot as assistant superintendent for the remainder of FY seventeen.
Second. Ellen?
Aye.
Kane?
Aye.
Hey, German?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Player?
Yes.
Seven J, discussion of possible board action, vote to approve the assignment of Madison Williams as the lead teacher at Lincoln Elementary for the remainder of FY seventeen.
Trying to be consistent with what we do in our school system. When I became superintendent, she went up to the high school and we had Sherry Benson as the lead teacher, the long fella. She was the building monitor at that point in time. And with Madison Williams being the school building sponsor, I'd like to recommend that she be the lead teacher at least for the remainder of FY seventeen.
What are those responsibilities for lead teacher?
Pretty much daily routine as a principal, but Tim's going to have to go back up there and do the evaluations and those types of things. She will come to our administrators' meetings and she will report anything to Tim that's going on, try to communicate that way.
Thank you.
Does she come up and say, you're sort of extra?
Yes, she will. Big saying is we compensate Sherry Benson. I think it's a one point two five factor for the remainder of the year.
I shall move.
I'll second.
Player? Yes. Parker?
Yes.
Hey, German?
Aye.
Kane?
Yes.
Ellen?
Aye.
I'd make the both executive session and discuss the superintendent's evaluation for point five or as section B one. I guess we vote on.
Yeah.
I guess, I'd not vote to convene or not convene in this executive session.
I shall move.
Second. Ellen?
Thank you guys for coming.
Kane?
Aye.
Hey, German?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
Player?
Yes.
Thank you, pardon me.
Lynn, I'd like to say too, going to executive session two or three times as well for the superintendent because of new instrument and so forth, how it's designed. There are several different areas of the evaluation and they may be combined two different, three and so forth. So it's an ongoing process, it's not a. Well, it may be for being hired in January, but then it will start again in February. It's an ongoing, it's like the TLE process of principals.
We switched instruments.
The board, the board decided to go with the new instrument to go on the secondary and it's a work in progress. It's, it's really a good instrument, Lynn.